Application before is congregation, tour of Heftilia, neighborhood house of worship, sketch plat, subdivision approval and preliminary site plan. Is there anyone representing the applicant here?
I did see Mr. Chergan, I just have to promote.
And we'll try to spend an hour on this. Does someone from the applicant wish to?
I promoted the wrong person.
Miss, does anyone representing the applicant wish to make a brief statement or presentation? And is is the engineer, Mr. Stroh here? And can someone put up just the basic site plan?
Hello?
Good evening.
How are you?
Mr. Chergan, is there anyone else from your team that needs to join?
I think it's just Stuart and me that are going to be talking.
Someone want to put up the plan? The basic site plan?
You want me to put that up, Max?
Yeah, Stuart, if you would.
Can you see it?
That's fine. I just want to indicate because Mary is not connected to the meeting. Feeling well today. And she did tell me this morning, though, that she received all the mailing documents and it appeared to be in order. So all I'm pointing out is that the mailing was done at, you know, in accordance with the regulations. The only thing I want to mention, which I mentioned now is when these letters are sent out certified mail, return receipt requested. When they come back, they're not signed by the individuals at those mailing addresses and house numbers. The post office doesn't want the mailman going up to the front door to hand you a document to sign and take it back because of COVID. So the mailman signed for it with their initials or they write COVID on it and they put it in your mailbox. That's the way they've been doing it for all these projects. So that must come out of the post office. Okay, there's someone wish to make the brief presentation about this. The board has the plans. We basically understand what the plan is and just that there are members of the public who are connected, listening in. This is what's referred to as a neighborhood place of worship. And it's based on a village local law, number one of 2019, which allows under certain conditions, either a community place of worship, neighborhood place of worship, or residential gathering place in residential districts in the village. And this particular one falls into the classification of neighborhood place of worship, which has specific conditions which this board will have to follow in reviewing this application. Okay, so whoever is going to make the presentation, Mr. Chergan or Mr. Stroh, would you just briefly explain what the project is?
Sure, well, I'll just introduce the project. As you said, you stole my thunder there. It's a neighborhood place of worship. Our clients have acquired two adjacent properties that we're going to be merging so that we can do a neighborhood place of worship in this, in this location. I would turn it over to Mr. Stroh to explain the specifics or answer any questions that the board has at this point.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe, and good evening, everybody. I'll make a brief presentation and then be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Stroh, just identify who you are in case members of the public don't know who you are.
Yeah, my name is Stuart Stroh. I work for Brooker Engineering and I'm the engineer for the applicant.
Okay.
Okay. This, the proposed project site is comprised of two tax lots. One tax lot is located on Weiss Terrace and one is on Roxbury Court. For clarity, the address of the property on Weiss Terrace is number six Weiss Terrace and the address on Roxbury Court is number eight Roxbury Court. In total, the properties are 1.25 acres. The properties abut each other on their rear property lines. The property on Weiss Terrace is located in the R-25 zoning district. The property on Roxbury Court is located in the R-35 zoning district. According to zoning code, the more restrictive zoning requirement, bulk requirements must be applied to the entire project. So the project is designed under the R-35 zoning requirements, which require larger setbacks and are more restrictive. The, as part of the project, the two lots will be merged into a single lot in the village of Chestnut Ridge. That constitutes a re-subdivision and it's therefore treated as a minor subdivision involving two lots. Part of our application was for a sketch plat for a minor subdivision to merge the two lots into one. The, as has been noted, this is a neighborhood place of worship. It's a conditional use in both zones. And as the chairman noted at his introduction, there are, there's a list of conditions that must be complied with. And those are relative to things like the breakdown of the floor area, certain use restrictions. And we know that the planning board will go through those in detail as the review progresses. The proposed building has a total floor area of 9,958 square feet. The building size was reduced as a result of CDRC meetings that we attended and previous technical reviews. The applicant spent a lot of time revising and fine tuning the floor plan so that it's been developed in a manner that meets the needs of the congregation in terms of their religious observance. As part of the project, there are 50 parking spaces proposed. That is the number that is required by the zoning according to the size of the building. But the property has the unique situation of having road frontage on two roads, which are on the opposite sides of the project. One of the conditions that goes with the conditional use is that no parking spaces are allowed between the structure and any street line. Because of the unique layout of this project, it's not possible to have the parking behind the building and not be along one of the street frontages. So the parking spaces are in between the building and Roxbury Court and that will require a variance because we can't practically meet that condition. There are a few other variances that are required for the project. One, one of those variants is for development coverage. 50% is allowed. The project proposes 54%. The increase in development coverage is largely needed in order to provide the required number of parking spaces. And also the unique situation of having two driveways. Variances are also requested, minor variances for encroachment into the required front setback and front yard on Weiss Terrace. And where 50 feet is required, 47 feet are provided. And the final variance is a request to allow two building mounted signs. One of the conditions of the neighborhood place of worship is that only one building mounted sign is allowed. Again, because of the unique circumstance of having frontage on two streets, we think as a matter of safety, it would be beneficial to have a building mounted sign on each side of the building facing each street. That's a quick overview. I don't think you want any more technical information, but of course I would be glad to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to present the project.
Thank you, Mr. Stroh. What's the, just refresh our memory as to what the total number of the seating in the sanctuary accommodates? How many people?
Yeah, I think that the, let me check the number for you, Mr. Chairman.
It's on the bottom of that plan that you have.
Yeah, I think it is.
I can't read, I can't read it, it's too small. Oh, you're enlarging it.
217. It's at the bottom, it's in the here, it's in the calculation here.
Okay, I just want to point out, so our parking calculation is one space for, can you just blow that again? One space to 200 square feet or five or five worshippers? Oh, wait a second, one space to 200 square feet of floor air or per, or for five worshippers at a maximum seating capacity, whichever is great. And the parking spaces are based on.
It's the square feet here, because that gives you a bigger number.
Right.
Right, okay, so once again, the capacity was 217 and we have 50 spaces now. The idea behind allowing these in residential neighborhoods is that, that people have the ability to walk to services if they, they, if they don't drive on the Sabbath or on holidays. Does the board feel that it would be important for the applicant? I mean, not knowing if the number of parking spaces is really going to be enough to know of the members of this congregation right now, what street addresses they live at to see how many people we think would be able to walk because they're not walking, you know, more than a few blocks or no greater than a mile, knowing that some of these people would be walking to services as opposed to driving in the event that the parking becomes insufficient with the calculation that it is and cars are parked on both Weiss Terrace and Roxbury Court, which members of the public may be upset about. Does anyone feel that we should ask for that information or not? I'm asking the board.
Again, sorry, Mr. Chairman, that number of parking spaces per square feet, is that actually in the code? Is that where that came from?
Yes. Yeah, it's a code item.
Yeah, so then I think that's sufficient. I mean, they're following the code, that's what that's.
Right, well, unfortunately, we haven't changed the code and we had discussed this, this came from, basically came from Ramapo. And it's, it probably is insufficient on a lot of projects and at some point we'll have to change it to make it more responsive so that we don't have a problem with, you know, overflow parking, not only in this project, but in other projects.
But, you know, and maybe Mr. Bab could weigh in on this. That would be more for like a legislative, like for the trustees, just from our planning board perspective. If it's the code, then that's what we should be looking at.
Well, we can look at the code, but I'm asking whether the board feels that we could ask where the con rickens live to get an idea that there might be a certain percentage of the people in the congregation right now, that the odds are that they'll walk to the synagogue as opposed to driving. That's all I'm asking.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think our obligation is to build this, not for necessarily its use today, but its use into the future as well, which is a little of an unknown, which is why I think we have a code to follow. But I will note that there have been some projects in the village where we've also incorporated land bank parking for overflow. And I don't know whether that is something that was done on those particular projects to satisfy a code requirement or to satisfy a use or a need, whether that would apply here.
Can I just, can I just say something? I don't want to interrupt, but I believe the parking requirement here was set when the local law was passed and that was just recently by the village. This isn't Ramapo that you're following. And I think honestly, it's going to go the other way. I think there's more parking here than is going to be needed considering this, you saw it, it's 217 people that can be in this building at one time legally. You have 50 parking spots. The, the, most of the people who are going to be belonging to this or praying at this synagogue are in the community and are going to be walking. I think you're going to be staring at three or at least two empty parking spots all the time, which, you know, it's preventing, it's preventing rain from going into the ground. It's increasing our development coverage. I think actually it goes the other way, but look, the code, this law, the local law that passed the house of worship law, included the parking, I believe. I mean, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think that's correct.
No, I'm looking at it right now. I don't, I'm looking at it right now. I don't see where it's giving you that parking calculation, but I'm looking at it right now. The required number of parkings. Oh, that's, hold on one second. Neighborhood, neighborhood. I'm looking for the parking. Required number of onsite parking space in the neighborhood shall be determined by column F of the table of general use requirements.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is although it does go to a general table, you would think that the thought was put in that that's the right column for this type of use. And it's, it's, so what I'm saying is it's in this local law that was passed January of last year.
I have a copy of the law, but I don't have the general use table that went with that law.
Mr. Chairman, I could provide some insight on the law as I assisted the village board with the drafting. The, the parking requirement, as you state, from the town of Ramapo and that has been in the village of Chestnut Ridge and that you used for Foster Church and Coptic Church and some of the other places of worship over the years, was reviewed during the course of review of the the three tiered place of worship system that was adopted a little over a year ago. And it was determined that at the time, I believe that certain parties were requesting that that be reduced. And the village board decided that that should remain the requirement for the purposes of the neighborhood and community places of worship. They added a provision to the community place of worship where there were going to be large events for the planning board to require parking plans. And then for the public assembly, the residential public assembly, they provided a provision to allow some reduction. So essentially, the issue was taken up by the village board when the code was adopted just over a year ago.
So basically, then the parking calculation is what's in the, what's in the zoning regulations of the village?
Correct, in the use table.
In the use table and not, and not specific, any specific table established for these projects?
Well, the, the parking requirement that's in the use table is that which has applied for places of worship for as long as the village has been existence in my knowledge.
Right.
And they just affirmed that requirement for the neighborhood places of worship level. They gave some relief upon application for the residential gathering places. And they allowed the planning board the ability to require additional parking for the community place level in the event that they were going to be having
Okay. But getting back to ask, wants them to provide this or doesn't? We just need to move on, we got to make it, we have to make quicker decisions. And when I ask questions, the board isn't responding a lot of times to me. Pointed out by one member of the public when he was speaking said, yes, only, no one abstained, they didn't say anything. So you have to respond. Do we want to ask of the members of this congregation right now for their addresses, what streets they live on? That's all, it's either a yes or a no. If the board doesn't want it, we don't do it, that's all. This is a democratic board. I have the same vote that everyone else is. I have one fifth of the, of the, of the voting power of the board.
I don't, I don't think he asked me.
Wait, wait, I can't listen to two people. Mark, stop, Mr. Wasserman. Mark, quiet, quiet for a minute, sorry. Mr. Wasserman, what were you saying?
I don't think it's appropriate or effective to poll to find out what streets they might live on. They are, I believe this, this congregation is currently worshiping at 7:50. I think it'd be more accurate to look at the type of, the number of cars that are being driven to services at 7:50 Chestnut Ridge Road, use that as a proxy.
Okay, Mr. Levine, now you may speak.
That Jeff just covered it, thank you.
I don't believe it's necessary.
It's an act of congregation.
Okay, we don't, we don't need to, we don't need to discuss it anymore. We're not, we're not, we're not asking for it. Mark, we don't need to discuss it anymore. We're done with that, we're not asking for it, fine. Next, okay, so this generally, this project requires either a special permit or a conditional use permit. I'm not sure which, we'll get to that. We did, we did the lead agency jurisdiction. We're going to review the plans. They'll need a, they would need a variance if it was over 10,000 square feet. We'll put them into another classification. They reduced the size to be underneath that. There are some key provisions about providing landscaping of at least 10 feet at the perimeter. It will require architectural review board approval and emergency services approval. I make up these checklists when we do these projects. I'm just going to read what I have on my checklist. Mary, when she's back in the office, will be able to provide everyone with a copy of this. It's just like a reminder that we don't forget to review something. So it's, we're going to adhere to the local law, number one of 2019 for neighborhood place of worship. We will review the plan and the narrative concept. Has been to CDRC. It's got to adhere to the, to the zoning bulk requirements as required. We'll look at the vehicle circulation pattern, the parking, lighting and landscaping signs, dumpsters, if there are any trash removal, where the nearest fire hydrant is, if there's an emergency generator location, utility availability. I mean, there were homes here, so I have to assume that there's adequate water, gas, electricity, sewer, storm and, storm and sewage sewers. It'll need a review by emergency services, architectural review board, any special features, agency reviews and any variances required if needed. In terms of the general layout, my opinion is to get the parking in, this was probably, in a way, to situate the the building and the parking, this is probably one of the only ways that it could be done. So I don't have a problem with it. I wouldn't ask that they modify the plan from what's shown right now. In terms of a fire department, if we send this to the fire department, they're going to want a a super layout of the, this Pierce 20 aerial ladder to see that that large aerial ladder could get into the site and make, make the two turns that are required to get into the site. We can do that, but we would need the engineer to make an overlay showing the turning radius of that Pierce 20 aerial ladder. The only thing I would just want to add is which has come up on other projects where the, oh, he's got it on a drawing already.
This was not submitted, Mr. Chairman, so. But I, I did draw it and I can fine tune it, but we think that the vehicle can actually navigate the site. So I have to make a little more careful analysis right in this area.
Okay, let me.
Possibly adjust radiuses.
Let me just caution you about something that's come up on some other projects where the aerial ladder can make the turns, but the rear platform swings out past the driveway or the, or the curb onto the lawn or the property where there may be some obstructions or maybe that's where snow is going to be piled or there may be trees or a fence or a dumpster or anything else. They don't, the fire department doesn't want that. So that, when the vehicle makes the turn, no part of the vehicle can extend over the road surface, past the road surface. So I'm just, I'm just advising you with that right now, which we learned from other reviews.
Yeah, the analysis demonstrates the rear of the vehicle. So the lines on the plan actually demonstrate the tail end of the vehicle remaining in the pavement, but understood. We would like to know at what point the plan gets sent to the fire department because we think that's an important component of the project. So if we could request that to occur sooner than later, it would help.
As soon as you fine tune this and modify it if you need to, we'll send it as soon as we get it from you.
We'll get that in right away.
Okay, now let me just tell you that what's been agreed to with the fire department because we've had problems getting them to review things in a timely fashion. They've agreed to have a meeting the first Wednesday of every month to review these plans. So we missed a meeting, I guess, yesterday. So as soon as you get this to us, the next time it will be reviewed would be the first Wednesday in January. And we should have their comments before this applicant will appear the next time after we adjourn you to another date specific.
Okay, thank you.
As soon as you modify the plan, I guess you could send us copies and we'll send it to the fire, the fire department and the fire inspector. They'll both review it.
Okay.
Right. Are there any members of the planning board that wish to comment on the plan at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments.
Yes, Mr. Wasserman.
Some are aimed at Martin Spence, our consultant. And just to see whether or not the development coverage calculations have been checked from our end. It looks like to me greater than 54% coverage, but I'm not an engineer, so I'd love to have that calculation confirmed. I'd also like to, thinking ahead, jumpstart an assessment of the drainage systems. That's something we spend a lot of time on with all applications. And with quite a bit of impervious surfaces here, I want to make sure that the underground system is sufficient for the site, particularly given that the site pitches in two directions.
And then for the applicant, I just was curious to know, you mentioned there were two minor variances required setbacks, each one is 2.5 feet. And I'm just curious to know why that's necessary and that is the site plan so tightly packed that you can't mitigate 2.5 feet, that you need a variance for that?
We, we looked into reducing the building. As I, as I noted, it was previously proposed as greater than 10,000 square feet and we were told that that puts it into a different category as far as the use is concerned. It turns it into a community place of worship. So when the building was redesigned, it was desired to have this small projection of the building, which does go into the yard. We would like the opportunity. Uh, we would like the opportunity to make our case for that to the zoning board. We think it's a minimal, um, encroachment. If you look at the plan, I zoomed in a little bit. Um, the, the existing dwelling, I should have mentioned in my introduction that the two existing dwellings would be removed as part of the project. Um, the existing dwelling, um, encroaches into what it would be the 50-foot setback that we have to respect. So there is some justification for, um, some development that's already occurred in there. And we, we just think it would be, uh, we, we would like to have the opportunity to make the case to the zoning board for that minor encroachment.
Okay, but, uh, Mr. Wasserman, are you in agreement with the basic layout of how they've laid the site out?
I am, my initial thoughts were it would have been nice to see the synagogue further, the building itself further from the property line, but I realize that may not be, um, adequate for the number of parking spaces they provided.
Okay, is there anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay, Mr. Le- Mr. Levine, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Stu, are you proposing a fence? Uh, how, how do you propose to screen this parking lot? It's, it's an extensive parking lot for, um, to be in a neighborhood. And the planting plan doesn't show that much screening on it.
So there is a, um, a six-foot vinyl fence proposed along both sides for full length of the, what I would define as.
Plated out.
Yeah, I'm talk, can you see my pointer on the screen?
Yes.
It's here, and then there's a, there's a vinyl fence here. Um, it goes up to, uh, the required front yard, a six-foot vinyl fence.
Is that, is that someone's dog that's in the room with them?
No, it's outside my room. If, if you want to give me a second, uh, I'll be right back.
Right.
Um, it was, it was Mr. Levine's question, but I'll continue. Uh, there's also some landscaping proposed, uh, inside the fence, um, evergreen trees. And, uh, there are also, um, a few trees which will be, um, I don't know how many, there, there are some right on the property line that could potentially remain, but they're not in great condition. So we showed them to be removed. And we're willing to add more landscaping if it's deemed necessary.
Right, okay.
Question was specifically to screen the parking spaces.
Right. Are you back, Mr. Levine?
Right, but the, yes, I am.
Okay.
But a six-foot fence is not going to be adequate screening for the, uh, adjoining neighbors. I mean, when they, when they look out their bedroom windows, you, you really need to put some planting in there to try to screen the parking.
Ma- Mark, there is a landscape plan that does show some proposed trees. We'll get into that, but.
Very few.
Let's not do that tonight, we want to get the basic concepts done. Then we'll get into the landscaping and the lighting. He does show it, I, I, I agree, I don't think it's sufficient, but we'll get into that, okay? Is there anything else that you want, want to comment on?
Basically, now, the only thing I want to comment on, uh, is this congregation exists. This congregation, I believe, is at the 750 building. They should know how many cars are attending services. If they find that 50 spots is not adequate, they should be addressing that now. Because my question to Paul is that if 50 spots are not adequate and they start using Weiss Terrace and Roxbury Court for parking. Now, on site plans, if, if the site is exceeding, um, their parking and parking on the streets, uh, can't the planning board bring them back in to revise their site plan?
Well, they're providing adequate parking for their needs based upon our code. If it turns out that the cars are parking on, on Weiss Terrace or Roxbury Court because there's not sufficient capacity, then the applicant's going to have to figure out where they're going to park other cars. Uh, if, if they're creating a problem for the residents, then the village board may have to consider putting no parking requirements on those roads. But you can't, you, you, you can't be concerned that in speculation, they may not have enough parking. So, um, I, 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 I don't know what you're asking. You want the applicant to say, we need 60 spaces, so here's where we're going to park the other 10? I'm, I'm not really clear.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to let the applicant know that this plan has to really satisfy their needs. If it starts expanding onto the local streets, that, um, it's, it's, they're going to have to modify in some respect, where it's just not going to happen. So the congreg- either the congregation has to self-police their parking. Um, you know, you, they, they can't, the streets not be used on a daily basis for parking.
Well, we're not, Mark, we're not going to know this until they, it gets approved, it's built, the parking goes in and we see what the organization of the spots are. We're not going to know, know that. Maybe they all won't be used and maybe they will be all used.
I understand, I understand that. I also want to make a comment straight and things, so that we understand what we've done in the past. Okay? As far as I can recall, the planning board has never waived parking. If the applicant felt they didn't need that much parking, we allowed them to land bank it, but they had to show how it could be developed in the future. We, I can't remember ever waiving parking.
Um, but here.
That's my comment.
Here there's probably no, no realistic place to put land ma- bank parking if it's needed. So.
But they're not looking for any favors, that Mark, they're not looking for any favors.
Now, Paul, Paul, I, I understand that, but it was brought up, um, before. If we have waived parking in the past, I just want to clarify, it has nothing to do with this application.
Okay.
This application, as far as parking goes, meets the code. The only last thing is, Stu, we had discussed in this, the island, if you can point it out, that we would try to put some landscaping in, into the island. And also, I'm going to repeat myself, looking at the landscape plan, which we will talk about later, I, I don't think it's sufficient on sites of the site.
Right, okay, I, I agree with you, we'll get into the, those details later. Is there anything else, Mark, you wish to?
Those are my comments.
Okay, we heard from Mr. Wasserman, Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, at this point, I don't have any further comments, I don't have any.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Cone, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, so every, so then is the board in agreement that basically the concept and the layout of the way they've laid the site out with the building and the parking, uh, we're in agreement with the concept that we're basically accepting the layout the way it is right now? The board?
Yes.
Mark Levine, yes.
Mr. Wasserman?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cone?
Yes.
Mr. Rubin, yes, okay. Um, at, um, okay, we heard from everyone. I asked Abe, you didn't have any comments at this point, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so do any of our consultants wish to point anything out? Either Mr. Baum, Mr. Spence, or Mr. Stock?
Mr. Stock, uh, we've, uh, we've done a couple of reviews on this application uh, and had several comments that were issued, uh, over the last year at CDRC. Uh, and the applicant has been responsive to all of our comments so far.
Okay, and Martin Spence, my last review is dated September 7, 2020. Uh, they've addressed prior comments. We do have, uh, some additional comments as part of this review. And to Mr. Wasserman's points before, um, pri- uh, at the time of the final layout, if this is the, uh, final tweaking, we'll ask for a CAD drawing to confirm the development coverage calculation. And the drainage is provided with, uh, subsurface storm tech systems. Uh, at the Weiss Terrace, uh, there's a large bank, an array of storm tech systems underground. And then there's a smaller drainage system underground that feeds out to Roxbury Court. Uh, we've submit, uh, we've received the preliminary drainage analysis. And to this point, it is satisfactory for controlling, uh, the stormwater runoff from the site.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking now at, at, um, Mr. Stock and Mr. Lockman's September 7, 2020, um, letter. Mr. Stone, do you have a copy of that?
Um, I do, Mr. Chairman, if you can give me a moment to bring it up, I will.
Okay, I just want to know if there's anything in there that we need to discuss. And while you're looking at that, there's also Martin Spence's letter from September 7.
I, I think that we went through all of these letters and we were, um, agreeable to make all of these revisions, Mr. Chairman.
Um, what about Mr. Baum's September 4th memo? I'm just seeing all the correspondence.
I think that those are, um, fairly straightforward and we will provide, we will respond to all of those, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and once again, Stu, you know the way we like to work. If, if you're in agreement with all of them, that's fine. If there are any that you're not in agreement with, um, that needs to come back to the board for discussion, then you just bring it to our attention.
Okay, I, I think as Mr. Stock pointed out, and I thank him for that, the applicant, uh, did take the, uh, comments from previous CDRC under advisement and, uh, made efforts to respond. So I feel that we've, um, really whittled it down to, um, some of the more detailed comments at this point. And, um, we appreciate, uh, Max pointing that out and everybody's effort reviewing it.
Okay, Mr. Baum, do you have anything at this point?
Nothing other than, than what set forth in my, um, my September 4th memo.
Okay, um, so at this point, I want to open it up to the public.